Okay, so, good evening and welcome to the August 11th, 2020, meeting of the Hatfield Select Board. We do -- oh, let's do some announcements. Did you have announcements?
I do have an announcement.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay. I know we're going between. So, the announcement I have today, as Diana just said, is Tuesday, the 11th, effective tomorrow, Wednesday, August 12th. The basketball hoops are coming down at all public locations. So, they're coming down at the park behind us, next to the fire station. It'll be coming down at the high school and the elementary school. And the reason for that is the COVID-19 guidelines are not being adhered to night after night, day after day, by the majority of people that are using it. And the COVID director and the COVID team feel that it's the right thing to do, unfortunately, for the kids, is to take the hoops down to try to avoid people not wearing masks and being too close to one another when they're not playing. So, hopefully, it's something that won't take too long for people to get back onboard, but for the time being, the hoops are coming down.
Excuse me, I've got somebody waiting to come in.
That's okay. Just wanted to let folks know that. That's the only announcement I had.
I don't think I have any announcements. Did you have anything, Ed?
No. I'm good.
Welcome to the meeting, Mr. Kennedy. Yeah, I don't think I have anything. So, is anyone here for public forum? Do you want to do this during public forum?
What's that?
This application?
Oh, we can -- sure. Yeah.
So, I don't know if you want to come up to the microphone.
Yeah. Please.
I'm new to this.
That's okay.
It's okay. So, we have Donald Rousher here from Rousher Brothers Auctioneers, looking for an auctioneer's permit. Looks pretty straightforward to me. Do you want to just let people know where and when it'll be?
It will be Saturday, the 12th of September, 24 Plain Road, 10:00 a.m. And rain date will be the 13th because of the COVID regulations. Everything has to be done outdoors, so people have ample room to spread, you know, spread out. And, yeah, it's farm equipment. There's tractors and this and that, nothing out of the ordinary. My brother was leasing the property. They bought property in Florida. Chuck Livingston passed away. The lease is up the end of September. They said, "Let's sell everything and buy new stuff when we get to Florida."
So, this will all be advertised?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
The reason you have a packet of paperwork there is the Division of Standards, State of Massachusetts, was closed for three and a half months.
Right.
Basically, just like your registration on your card, they extended it each month. Now, starting, I think, this week, I can get another -- I can renew my auctioneer's license, which was technically still good, but I didn't have a physical copy that was good for -- because it was the end of April when it expired. So, that's why you have extra paperwork there.
Okay, I see. And you have the COVID regulations and all of that regarding --
Yes, I do.
The only thing I'm going to ask you to do is on this application is you wrote the year as 2021. So, if you could just change that to 2020, that would be good.
Here's the original right here. If you can correct that.
My copy doesn't matter.
I am pretty good at --
You should change the street on that one, too, if you didn't already.
Yes. I'm good at counting, but not much else.
No worries. Can the people online please mute your phones?
11:20, right?
Mute your computers.
Are we getting --
Or is that the feedback? That's fine. No problem. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
I have a more detailed list if you need it. Just gave you the general idea of what the items to be sold.
Yep. It seems pretty straightforward.
Okay.
Understood. So, I will make the motion to approve the license, the one-day license, the application, excuse me, the application for the auctioneer's permit for September 12th, 2020, with a rain date of September 13th, 2020, to Donald Rousher and Brothers Auctioneers.
Okay.
I'll second it.
So, there's a motion made and seconded. Was there any more -- did you have any questions or anything or any comments?
No, I don't. Thank you for being here.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next order of business is building inspection fees. So, we have Mr. Scott here tonight. Hello. Should I try to turn this so people -- John, should I turn this to Kyle?
I don't know if people will be able to see you.
They may not hear him.
Oh, yeah.
They can at least see you.
Yeah, sure.
Okay. So, did you want to just sort of review these and point out?
Well, I had changed the fees in 2015 shortly after I got the job here, came onboard. And I, going through them, I was looking at other communities. I took the town of West Hampton, Southampton, South Deerfield, various communities around ours. And our fees, and discussing it with other building inspectors, seemed a little out of whack, not quite what they should be. So, I took a kind of a middle-of-the-road approach and added to them and changed what I thought needed to be fixed. Some of them, like, for instance, commercial was on the high side, so I adjusted that. And I evened it out across the board, so it was more reflective of what average fees in the surrounding area are.
I do appreciate that you did the research. You didn't just arbitrarily change the fees.
No, sir.
So, I appreciate the work you put into this, and there was a lot of thought.
Yeah.
And if people want to realize that, I mean, even though the fees are going up a few dollars, it's after all the research you've done.
It's also, some of these permits become a lot more intense to review than they used to be. They're a lot more complicated, for instance, like with some of the solar systems and that. So, it takes up a lot more time, basically.
Well, and we haven't raised them in five years.
We haven't raised them at all. We've been very conservative on our fees.
Okay.
So, I think it's very well justified.
Will these be available online?
They'll be available online. I thought maybe a start date of, like, say, October 1st, so that people will have a chance to know the fees are being changed, and it's not unfair to anyone out there.
Right.
So, I thought, effective October 1st.
Well, I'm willing to make a motion to accept the fees as presented by Kyle on the increases.
I'll second that.
Great. There's a motion made and seconded. Any further discussion?
No.
Nope.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Kyle.
Thank you, Kyle. So, now, I'm going to turn this back around. So, our next order of business is an appointment to the police department. Joining us online is Edward Kennedy. And there is a letter here from Chief DeKoschak recommending that we appoint him as a full-time officer for Hatfield. This would be an evening position. Is that correct, Mr. Kennedy?
It is.
Okay, great. And you previously worked for Hatfield, part-time, in the past.
It's a wonderful community. I believe I worked for you guys in 2015. Ended that in 2016 as a reserve officer, part-time.
Excellent. Well, it's great to have somebody coming onboard who already is somewhat familiar with the community. Not much has changed here since you left. So, you should be all set to jump right back in. But I'm, you know, just delighted to have you, you know, back onboard. And so, did either of you have any questions for --
I just want to say, Mr. Kennedy, thank you for your service. And thank you for coming back to Hatfield. That's my only comment.
I would concur.
Yeah, and you don't need to turn it, Diana. And I would echo that, Mr. Kennedy. Welcome back to Hatfield. Thank you. Certainly, your qualifications speak for themselves as far as hitting the ground running and with your background and education. So, we're glad to have you. Thank you very much.
Yes. Well, welcome back and much appreciated. So, did either of you want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that Edward Kennedy be appointed as a full-time police officer for the town of Hatfield, as recommended by Chief DeKoschak.
And I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion?
No, thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Welcome. We don't have to do anything on the salary, because Mike does that himself, correct?
It's right here. Just needs to be signed later.
We just have to sign it. Okay. Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. I was thrilled working with you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Lydia, did you want to come up to the microphone? It's -- okay, so, this is just, it's just these two election workers. So, we have a memo here from our town clerk asking that we appoint two election workers, Corwin Peterson and Mauricia Geisler?
Mauricia, yeah.
Mauricia Geisler. Corwin is from Sunderland, and Mauricia is from Main Street in Hatfield. So, I think it's great that they want to do this, you know. I've always thought it would be so fun to work at the polls, so that's great.
Well, you want to appoint you, too?
Someday.
As long as you're not running.
Someday. Someday.
I'll make a motion to accept these two election workers.
I'll second that.
A motion's made and seconded. Any further discussion?
No, thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Again, welcome aboard to those two women, and we thank them for wanting to come help us out.
Did you want to hit us with any election info while you're here?
Election info? We mailed out over 500 ballots on Thursday.
Wow.
I believe they were arriving in people's mailboxes today. That was what I heard, was a five-day turnaround, because they had to send them out of town and back. We separated the ones we did today, so the in-town ones will stay in town, hopefully. I can't make promises, but I like doing this.
Why would we be sending out-of-town ones?
They were all, the 500 were all together. They weren't sorted between -- there were some out of town, there were some North Hatfield, West Hatfield. So, unless I separate them.
They go to the bulk.
But I guess I'm asking, why are we sending ballots out of town? Is that, like, absentee?
Well, like any other mail. It goes to Connecticut, and then comes back.
I'm saying, aren't those ballots for our registered voters?
Correct.
So, if there are registered voters, why do they get sent out of town?
Oh, you mean, like, some of them go out of town, because people will have a mailbox in North Hampton, because that's where they're working?
Okay.
Or, you know, I've got, you know, some people that are -- well, I think, basically, that's it. They're probably working or someplace they go to every day, that they're getting, it's easier for them to get their mail. So, yes.
Okay. I just thought, just --
It's not a lot of them, but every once in a while, I do have an out-of-town post office box that things get mailed to.
Okay. And then, we have the warrant for the state primary.
We have the warrant for the state primary.
Which will be held on September 1st. Polls open 7:00 a.m., close at 8:00 p.m. And the race, well, there's really no, I don't, oh, there is.
Democratic.
Yeah, there's a Democratic.
Senate.
Right? The Senate race is, has, okay.
We've got some races, yeah.
So, there's Senator in Congress, Representative in Congress, Counselor, Senator in General Court, Representative in General Court, and Registered Probate.
Mm-hmm.
So, okay.
And we have tons of early voting.
I was just going to ask.
They have expanded early voting this year. So, before the primary, we have a, they're requiring weekends.
Yep.
Wow.
Saw that.
And so, we will be having early voting on the 22nd, which is Saturday, from 2:00 to 4:00 in the afternoon, and from 6:00 to 8:00 at night. On Sunday, it'll be 10:00 to 12:00 for a couple hours. We only have to do a couple hours, because we're small. And then, during the week, it will be my pre-COVID normal hours, which is Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, from 9:00 to 4:30. So, every day that I'm open, pre-COVID, will be available for early voting. The town hall will be only, the town hall hours where all the other offices are open to the public will still be the same, and a sign will go up on the door that during those non-public hours, the town hall will only be open for early voting, and all the other offices will be closed, so we can minimize, still minimize as much as we can, the traffic.
Does that mean this space will be set up for polling?
Correct.
That whole time?
Yes, that whole time.
So, we may need to, if we have meetings, adjust.
Well, usually, in the past, I use the smaller end of the office. However, because of the COVID restrictions and trying to keep distances, I, my plan was, and I talked to Carrie this morning, to use this half of the office and leave it here. But it's only 9:00 to 4:30, and typically, there aren't meetings between 9:00 and 4:30. So, I shouldn't, you know, run into --
Oh, there's upstairs.
A problem.
There's upstairs, and there's the fire station.
Yes. Right. In case, you know, in case somebody does have to have a meeting, and I know --
Leave all your stuff set up. We don't, people can adjust to your schedule, given the circumstances, Lydia.
And come November, they've expanded it to two weeks. So, we've got two weekends where we'll be open on Saturday and Sunday for a couple of hours for two weekends, plus my regular hours, you know, during the week.
Well, I happen to love Election Day. Like, I'm going to always want --
I'm coming here on September 1st.
I love Election Day. I'm coming on Election Day. But I think it's good, because it's an opportunity to sort of spread out when people are coming and minimize crowds and lines.
It does. It is good. As much as I've been, you know, there goes my weekend.
Right.
I was talking to someone today who was originally from, I think she said Nebraska, and she said, "We always had early voting on weekends. That was the norm." She goes, "It's just new to Massachusetts." But, so, yeah.
Okay, well, thanks for making all those adjustments.
Yes, thank you.
And so, we need to vote to sign this warrant?
Yeah, yeah, sign or accept or --
Yeah. I'll make a motion that we accept the warrant as presented for the 2020 state primary.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I skipped that other part, because I didn't think there'd be any discussion. There, that's great.
Thanks, Lydia.
You're welcome. If you want to sign that original, I'll take it, and then I'll throw a couple more.
And that all will be on the website, right? All those polling hours, because --
There already are.
Okay, good.
Does it have to be black or anything special? And, okay. Which doesn't matter, because I've come to find out this is black. Guess I don't use it much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lydia.
Thanks, Lydia.
So, next, we have a water abatement for a Mr. Donald Shaw out on West Street. Sharon, you're, are you here to talk about this?
Just, she's available if there's any questions.
Okay, just, okay.
I'm just going to come down.
So, it looks to me like something must have malfunctioned, because this property wasn't even occupied?
Correct.
So, the meter malfunctioned? Is that --
Phil said it has to be looked at.
Pardon me?
I'm just going to come down. I'll be right there.
No, I have the information.
Oh, Brian, I do, too.
I talked to Phil, and I talked to Tony.
Okay. Brian's in the know.
This is, and Sharon, please correct me if I'm, you know, make a mistake. So, this is the trailer down on Route 5. Those water meters were put in by the owner of, or the landlord of, that entire park. So, it is, in fact, a defective meter. And Phil and Tony have already reached out to the owner/landlord and said, "You need to get somebody out here to update or to fix that one, or replace it," or what have you. Yeah. This was, in fact, a, the reading was incorrect because of the meter, and yes, it is an unoccupied trailer, so.
So, if it's not occupied, they probably shouldn't get a $2,000 water bill.
That is correct.
Okay.
So, I hope --
Did you have any questions, Ed?
No, I just, I'd like to see a follow-up from them on if that, the metering down there got corrected. That's the only thing I would ask for.
Okay.
So, I will make a motion to abate the $1,898.74 at 139 West Street, Lot 4, given the comments that we all just made regarding the defective meter.
Right, which will leave them with the minimum bill of $75.
Correct. $75, yep.
Okay, I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion?
No.
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then, we have one last agenda item that I'm going to turn over to Brian.
All right, thank you. So, the following item has to do with the Hoyoke Soldiers' Home. And many of our neighboring communities and cities, towns, public officials, veterans' agencies, veterans groups are trying to show their support by passing resolutions. And that resolution, which I'm about to read, I'd like to preface that with stating that there is an organization that's sort of spearheading the cause of trying to make improvements and get the funding from the state legislature and the governor's office and things like that. That group is called HoyokeSoldiersHomeCoalition.org, should anybody want to look them up. But, the group is made up of veterans, family members, veteran service representatives, and concerned citizens who believe that we can and must move forward with improvements to the aging soldiers' home facility. I'd like to add that I think we probably all know somebody, or had a relative, or just given our proximity to the Hoyoke Soldiers' Home, probably know of residents and employees that have been there. So, I think it's a, it's an important resolution to make. I would also say that, according to our veterans' agent, who got the information off of, I think, off of Lydia's, either the voting records or the census, Hatfield itself has probably more than this number, but has 173 veterans. And 125 of them, or almost 75%, are over 62, which is probably the age where folks would probably begin to need or use what's available at the Hoyoke Soldiers' Home for them, for medical reasons. So, I just thought that might be important for residents to understand, that we've got a very big number, including one sitting at the table with us tonight. One reason it's important to support veterans, not only do our veterans protect our rights and freedoms, but they also provide services and aid to those in need. In many instances, the U.S. is the first on the scene providing medical aid, food, and water at a level no other country can come close to during disasters, both home and abroad. The vision of the coalition is as follows. We envision a soldiers' home in Hoyoke, where veterans enjoy an excellent quality of life and quality of care, where they, their families, and the staff engage in relationships that result in the best possible environment, where veterans want to live and staff want to work, and where all are protected, sustained in the safest and most compassionate home possible. Therefore, I would ask my colleagues to join me in approving the following resolution in support of the Hoyoke Soldiers' Home. This is rather lengthy, but I think it's important. So, if you both will indulge me for one moment. So, whereas in 1952, the Hoyoke Soldiers', excuse me, the Soldiers' Home in Hoyoke opened and has provided care with honor and dignity to thousands of Massachusetts veterans for over 68 years, whereas in 2010, veteran rooms at the Hoyoke Soldiers' Home were determined by the U.S. Department of Veteran Affairs to be noncompliant with the Uniform Federal Accessibility Standard. Whereas in 2012, the Massachusetts Division of Capital Assets Management commissioned a needs assessment study that determined that, of the 278 current beds, less than 5% meet the VA standards. Whereas in 2013, a design to add 120 private rooms, as well as convert existing rooms, thus creating 278 fully compliant beds, was approved by the U.S. Department of Veteran's Affairs for 65% federal funding. However, the state has repeatedly failed to commit its 35% share of matching funds required to allow for the start of construction. Whereas in 2016, a project to create an adult-day health care program at the soldiers' home in Hoyoke was also approved by the VA for 65% funding. However, it also has never received Massachusetts' commitment for the 35% matching funds. Whereas in November 2017, with the support of Governor Baker and the legislature, the state approved $199 million to build a new 154-bed, long-term care facility at the soldiers' home in Chelsea, while disregarding the long-documented deficiencies at the Hoyoke Soldiers' home. Whereas the lack of sufficient space and staff were major contributing factors in the rapid spread of the novel coronavirus-19 at the home, which resulted in the deaths of 76 veterans who tested positive for COVID-19. This atrocity is one of our country's worst veteran tragedies and contradicts Massachusetts' claim of being the best in the nation for veterans' benefits. Whereas, all veterans deserve equal treatment in Massachusetts state-funded veteran homes to include the same living conditions, as well as proportionate funding to provide for a safe and efficient level of staffing in all departments. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the Board of Selectment of the Town of Hatfield urges Governor Baker and the legislature to take immediate action to increase funding to ensure sufficient staff, equipment, and supplies to provide safe care, and to expedite the design of the new soldiers' home in Hoyoke to allow for the construction of fully compliant rooms for 250 veterans, including a toilet and shower in each bedroom, and the establishment of an adult daycare, excuse me, an adult health care program to meet the VA project's submission date of April 15, 2021, in order to approve the best-in-care for those who have borne the battle and sacrificed their safety and well-being to preserve our nation's freedom. Thank you.
I'd like to thank my colleague, Brian, for bringing this forward. I was so impressed with this resolution. I've already sent it to the various veterans groups in town, asking for their support. And because of your efforts, I hope it continues to snowball through the state. So, thank you, Brian.
Thank you, Ed.
And thank you, Ed, yeah. I guess I would just add two things that I'm very well aware of, because of my many years working for State Rep. Peter Kokat, and that is, first of all, how woefully inadequate the facility is and how really poorly designed it is. It's almost not able to be just renovated or retrofit. And also, I know how much, how many Hatfield residents have relied on it, because oftentimes, people would be in touch with our office to try to help with placements there. And you were right on the money, Brian, when you said that we all know somebody from town. I know many people from town who've had the benefit of being cared for there, but we definitely need to do better. So, you know, to me, this is a resolution that has a, you know, direct impact on our residents here. So, I think it's very important that we do this.
And I also like to point out, it's also saved some people their homes.
Right.
That's right.
And that's been, the town residents have benefited from it.
That's true. That's actually an excellent point. Yep. Okay, so, we need to vote on this. Maybe you would like to make the motion.
Well, Brian brought it up, but --
So, I will make a motion that the, that the Town of Hatfield approve or accept the resolution as presented.
And I'll second that.
A motion made and seconded. Any further discussion?
No, thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And thank you again, Brian, for bringing this forward.
Yeah, thank you, Brian, for bringing this forward.
Thank you.
Much appreciated. So, Marlene, did you have anything else tonight?
I don't. Just, well, actually, one thing, just to let you know that I am meeting with the accountant tomorrow, and our treasurer, our accountant will be on site tomorrow. And we'll be discussing closing out FY '20 and how soon we could, you know, get the audit started. and our treasurer, our accountant will be on site tomorrow. And we'll be discussing closing out FY '20 and how soon we could, you know, get the audit started. And, and just reviewing, putting together, working on a statement regarding the town's overall, you know, finances and particularly with, you know, outsourcing our accounting frequency with Bay State.
Right.
Putting on something together. So, we'll have that. And that's about it.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. Okay, if there's nothing further, you guys are all set?
Well, I mean, I do want people to know that we are getting emails from the engineer on the 5 and 10 projects. So, I think that's important for people to know that the projects can, it's still moving along. And it's still, I believe we're still on target for that project, because people have been asking, you know, what the status is.
And I guess I'd add that there is some, there will be some improvements on Chestnut Street, correct?
Yes.
So, Chestnut Street, for anyone who travels that road often, like I do, it hasn't been in terrific shape. But there is, they are working on that.
Yep.
There's a plan. There's a plan. I'm not exactly sure what it is.